Before we do so, can I ask that Kathleen move over Samin to an attendee? Or I mean to a panelist.
What happened, the what? A joint special meeting, City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission, the City of Pearland, for Monday, November the 16th, 2020, at six, later in the night here than the recent expense. With that information in the record, let me call this special project to order and do a roll call of the City Council and ask the Councilmember Little for certification of our, of our quorum.
Mayor, I certify that we have a quorum present for the joint special meeting.
Okay, Madam Secretary, we certify the quorum for the latest meeting. Moving to item number three, which is roll call for, and certification quorum for Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mayor, this is, Planning and zoning has a quorum. Thank you.
An introduction of agenda and format of the hearing, which is something that, for you, Martin, or staff.
Thank you, Mayor Reed. So for tonight's conditional use permits, the joint special meeting will have a call to order for each item, then staff will present their report, followed by an opportunity for the applicant to present, and we'll have public comments in either support or opposition to. At that point, the, they will be given three minutes to address the City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Afterwards, we'll have council, commission, and staff discussion. Then the joint special meeting for each item will adjourn, and a City Council new business item will be had for each, each presentation, where the City Council will have the opportunity to vote to either approve the request as presented, approve it with conditions, deny the request, or to table the item to a future date for more information to be provided. On the agenda for tonight, we have quite a few items to discuss, the first of which is a U-Haul business located at 1853 Pearland Parkway, Suite 123. Second will be for a helipad within the Shatter Creek Plan Development located at 11,100 Shatter Creek Parkway. Then we'll, we'll have an accessory dwelling unit to be discussed at 3610 Curtis Road, followed by two gas stations, the first of which will be at 1556 McCalla Road, and the second will be at 4109 Mansell Road. May I cue Mayor Reed?
Okay, that information in the record, let's move then to item number five. Joint Special Meeting Number One, Madam Chairman, would you read this into the record?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's a request by Obi on a Duaca, I might have said that wrong, I'm sorry, from Bismarck Mail and Print applicant, on behalf of Grace Business Venture Owner, for approval of a conditional use permit, CUP, for truck heavy and bus rental or sales within the Stonebridge Plan Development PD District to accommodate a U-Haul dealer on approximately 4.5066 acres. The general location is 1853 Pearland Parkway, Suite 123. Thank you, Mayor.
Item A, application information case summary. Item one is staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and Commission. My name is Florence Blacko with the Development Department. And so this request is for a conditional use permit to allow truck heavy and bus rental or sales within the Stonebridge Plan Development. This is specifically for a U-Haul dealership. The location is 1853 Pearland Parkway, Suite 123, and the property has an underlying future land use of retail offices and services. So far, we've received one phone call against this request. So the property is Plan Development, it is the Stonebridge Plan Development. It has an underlying land use of retail offices and services. And that is a land use that supports the proposed request. Here is a view of the existing development, and so the applicant is occupying one of the suites within this strip mall, commercial strip mall. It's located along Pearland Parkway across from the development is a bank, and that is the second image. And then next to it is a vacant property, which is south of the subject property, and it is yet to be developed. And so just to give a little background to this, the applicant had started operating the business without a permit, but the applicant was notified of the need for a permit, and that is why they came forward to request for the conditional use permit. The Stonebridge Plan Development was approved in 2004, and under the approved plan, the Plan Development was approved under our previous land use and urban development code, which permitted the proposed use with what was then called a special use permit, and what we call a conditional use permit today. Also, in 2016, a city ordinance was passed to permit automotive uses only by conditional use permit, and so that is why this request is before you today. And so this is a layout of the existing development, it has some parking, most of its parking in front at Long Island Parkway, and then it has some designated parking spots on the back of the property. The applicant occupies the suite which is shown in yellow with a yellow rectangle, and then they are proposing designated parking spaces for the U-Haul trucks and equipment on the back of the building, and that is shown with the orange rectangle. And so again, this is an area view showing the existing development and the proposed location for the parking. Currently, the area behind the development is, has not been developed, it's a vacant property, which will be developed in future. And I also want to remind you that the property is located along Pearland Parkway, which is in the Corridor Overly District, where the city has invested money to make it aesthetically pleasing and hoping to preserve a certain aesthetic, aesthetic quality for the street. And so this, the applicant is proposing to park up to a 17-foot U-Haul, and that is what is shown in the upper-left corner of your screen, and as you can see, the track is bigger than, or exceeds the length of the parking space, and so a portion of the parked track, even though it's been backed up all the way to the curb, encroaches onto the fire lane. And so we believe that the maximum that, track side that can be parked in that location would be a 15-foot track and below. And so staff has evaluated the request based on criteria established in the Unified Development Code, and has found that the proposed use that meets the requirements of the comprehensive plan and future land use plan. However, this is a proposal along Pearland Parkway, which is in the Corridor Overly District, and since this is not going to be a purpose-built development, they are going to occupy existing parking spaces. Staff is concerned that it would come down to an enforcement issue to prevent them from parking on the parking lot that is along Pearland Parkway. The property has been plotted, and there are utilities available to the site. Again, staff evaluated this request based on the criteria for approving conditional use permit. Again, we found it to be consistent with the future land use and zoning district. However, because it's in a Corridor Overly District, it comes down to enforcing the parking of the trucks behind the building, which staff is concerned about. Again, I showed you a picture of the 17-foot track, which encroaches into the fire lane. Staff deems this to be a safety issue, and then also because this is occupying an existing developed site, there's no way to really screen off the storage area for the vehicles and equipment, which would reduce any visual impact on adjacent development. And so based on that, staff recommends denial of the requested CUP. However, if council decides to move forward and approve the CUP, staff is recommending the following conditions, and the first one is that the parking of the U-Haul trucks shall be restricted to clearly marked parking space in the rear of the multi-tenant building. And then secondly, the parked trucks shall not be visible from Pearland Parkway. And then the third condition will be that the length, width, and height of the trucks and equipment on the premises shall not exceed the dimensions of a 15-foot U-Haul truck, and that is to prevent encroachment into the fire lane. And then finally, no part of the truck or equipment shall encroach into the adjacent fire lane when parked, and we believe that if the applicant is able to meet these conditions, they may be able to put the business there. Other than that, we don't think it's the, it's an appropriate use for the location. And that ends my staff report. Thank you.
Any further comment on this staff report?
No.
Assume that the staff report is completed. Okay, moving to item number two, which is applicant presentation. Mayor Protem to introduce the applicant for his presentation.
Mayor, we have one person signed up to speak on this. Mr. Valdez, are you the applicant?
Yes, I am. I'm speaking on behalf of U-Haul, representing Bismarck Mail and Print.
Are you here to make comments or just answer questions?
Both, sir. I mean, basically, we, we were, we're not trying to disturb the aesthetic appeal that you guys are going for off of Pearland Parkway. We're simply trying to accommodate the area. Right now, in East Pearland, we have two locations that provide our services, which are moving trucks and trailers for the most part, but both these locations have a lot of limitations, whether it be for personal reasons due to the owner or the fire marshal. So year-round, especially on the weekends and the holidays, like for example, right now, we have UPS, FedEx, Amazon requesting our equipment. We simply cannot accommodate their demand, and we are just hoping to have one or two more locations, specifically this one, that could provide just a few more trucks to serve the area. That way, we're not having to send customers north into Houston or south into Alvin, and keeping that business with the local business owners there in Pearland.
Does that complete your presentation, sir?
Yes, sir, for the time being.
Okay, Mayor, that completes applicant's presentation.
Okay, moving to item number three, under application information, a summary. Is person sufficient to speak for or against the proposed request? All left, I'm telling to.
Mayor, that was the person signed up to speak on this item, but is there anyone attending the meeting that would like to speak for or against this? No one, Mayor.
Mayor Protem, I think I see Obi, this is the business order, and he's raising his hand. I don't know if he wants to speak or not.
Yes, I'd like to speak. Thank you, Mohammed. Yeah, so I'm just pretty much picking, picking off of what Joel Valdez, the U-Haul manager said. I'm looking at the staff recommendations, we will have no issues following all of those recommendations if this was approved. Like we said, we don't want to disturb the aesthetic appeal of Pearland Parkway, we'll make sure it stays in the back, and there will be designated parking spots, we'll keep it under 15 feet, and most of the U-Haul equipments, we will not be using them, like trailers and dollies and all that, it will just be the smaller moving trucks that we'll keep
Thank you. Mayor, that completes comments on this item.
Okay. With that information completed, let's move to item number V on our agenda, which was provide an opportunity for our planning commission, our city council, and our staff to discuss these issues further and more detail. And in so doing, we'll start with the planning commission, and ask the planning commission chair to, chair with us.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, Commissioner Earls, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, I have a question. I understand the length and width and height of the trucks are going to be kept to only trucks that are 15 feet. Is that part of the conditional use?
Commissioner Earls, one of the recommendations that we are making, should City Council deem to approve this, is to condition the approval to not exceed the dimensions of the 15-foot U-Haul trucks, that way the truck does not poke out into the fire lane.
That was my question, is concern on enforcing that. So we're telling them they can only have certain trucks on those premises, and if and when that happens, we simply have to, my question, how to enforce that? And maybe I'm overstepping, I know we don't, that's my question, how to enforce that?
It would become up to code enforcement to become aware of the issue and to enforce the city's regulations as approved.
Okay, thank you. That's all for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Boswell?
Nothing for me. I echo the sentiments of Commissioner Earls. I want to know in terms of being able to enforce this, how realistic that is, because if it's not, then it's probably not something that I would be in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dansby?
I agree. Be concerned about city staff, literally with take measures and code enforcement going out there to make sure the length of trucks and height of trucks and all of that, and you know, if you have a U-Haul franchise, I believe you can, you know, you can support trailers, and, and I know that's not the intent, but supply and demand, if you have the ability to supply it and there is a demand, you'll figure out a way to do it. So I would be concerned that they would, the, the expanding business of a U-Haul would allow for additional, you know, demand for a product they don't currently have on-site, on-premise, they have plenty of parking in, to facilitate, you know, adding additional trucks or whatever is in demand. So once we, once we permit this, then, you know, code enforcement may spend some time doing futile, you know, measurements and discussions on, on what's there and what's not there, so I would be concerned about that as well.
Commissioner Cortez?
Thank you, Chairperson Cade. I couldn't agree more with the previous comments, and I'd also like to add, it seems to me that, according to the U-Haul gentleman, and I hope I'm paraphrasing him correctly, that the need is somewhat of an overflow, or there's already two locations, and they need to have a third, because there's limitations on the first two, and, and that some of these are going towards the Amazons and the, I'm assuming FedEx and UPS as a, as a maybe extra delivery in, in the holiday season. I get that. I guess I'd much prefer another location that wasn't in the corridor, you know, one of, one of the openness gateways to the city, as, as we used to call Pearland Parkway and some of the other areas. I just think there's better locations and, in, in more suited locations, that they might even have parking lots screened in. So that, that's my, that's my comments. Thank you all.
Thank you. Commissioner Henricks?
Okay, so I have a couple different questions. Is the, if somebody could just confirm, a fire lane is typically 24 foot wide?
I believe it's 25.
The fire lane depends on the height of the building, so it's 24. If the building height is less than, I believe, 35 feet, or something like that, and if it's higher than that, so more than two-story, then it will increase to 26.
Jennifer, you're muted.
Oh, thank you so much. Sorry. Okay, so I don't have real issues with this, and this is why. Number one, that space that they're renting from is a very, it's had a lot of different retailers that have tried to make it work, and obviously, I'm very pro-business, and if they can make that work, that's great for everyone. The second one is that it appears that the fire lane, and I don't have a survey, so I'm just making a Google Earth guess, which could be wrong, but it appears that it's 25-foot, and if they could extend the striping out of what, they may be able to fit it, but even better, it appears that they could potentially back up the curb on a couple different spots in the very back, where nobody would see it, and they could probably fit a U-Haul that would be, I don't know, on the larger size, in those particular spots, and it would be dedicated for that, and nobody would see it, and then we wouldn't have the issue of Pearland having to enforce this. That is just something that, you know, maybe if, if we were to approve this, or council were to approve it, that that could be looked at. It's dead middle of the building, and there's a couple of spots there where it appears that they have the space to back the curb up a little bit in the middle, and that's just my thoughts on this.
Thank you. The only, my only thought is about the larger the trucks, and forgive my ignorance if, if I'm wrong about this, but don't the larger trucks become harder on the roads and harder on the parking lots, the heavier trucks, besides being unsightly. That was my only comment. Thank you, Mayor.
That information clear, let's move to item number two, which is council input, and I'll start with William Owens, Councilmember Owens.
Thank you, Mayor. Pearland Parkway is in the overlay district, number one, so they can't have that visible in front of the Pearland Parkway, just like Lowe's gets by with it, but they shouldn't, they shouldn't have anything stacking in front of the facility at all. Atlanta, what you were talking about are, are like 18-wheelers, I think the feds say 118-wheeler does as much damage as 9,700 cars, and so, and that's, you know, their deal, but I don't know on this one, you know, I don't know how many of these, I mean, if you go out on a Beltway and you get down close to 288, there must be 100 trucks out there that I guess UPS uses or whatever. I mean, there's a huge number out there of trucks, but I know that Lowe's now, they rent pickups for you to use, if you wanted to use it, and it sits out in the front. But anyway, I think, you know, there's, I don't know, Pearland Parkway is one of the best roadways that we have here, it's more of a scenic deal, entryway coming in, and you know, that we spend a lot of city money and a lot of PDC money on there to improve those, just like it's been done on 35, and there's other places in it, I think, you know, we're getting to a point that we're getting too much of the, these type facilities here, and I can throw in a lot of other facilities in there too, I thought we're getting too many of in there, but I'm, to be honest with you, I do not think I would support this. And, you know, all these other things that we have in here through there, I guess the five areas that we have that should be incorporated into this, you know, for the recommended staff recommendations that's on there, so, but right now, I, I wouldn't be, you know, I wouldn't look at approving this from the council perspective. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you know, that was the whole reason back in 2016, when we did this conditional use permit for things like this, it was to protect and preserve Pearland Parkway, and I, you know, I'm all for, you know, businessman trying to make a living and provide a service to, to the people in the, in the area, but I just think this the wrong location for this, and I think enforcement would be a nightmare to try to keep up with this, so I just think it's in the wrong location. If this was somewhere on 35, I would be extremely happy to approve this, but I can't be in favor of this at this location.
Okay, Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Got one quick question for the applicant, maybe for the U-Haul rep. So at this location, I guess similarly to other U-Haul locations, if I were to rent a U-Haul from somewhere else, could I reasonably assume that I could drop it off or return the U-Haul at a different location, including this one, of any truck size?
So I, I'll leave that for JD, the U-Haul representative, to answer, because he has the experience in this.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Okay, so yeah, to just, to address a few of those concerns, the trucks that we're proposing to have there are strictly the 10-foot and 15-foot length trucks, which the 15-foot itself, the cabin chassis is similar to any duly truck. The box itself is made out of lightweight fiberglass reinforced plywood, so I don't think a concern, or I don't think there should be concerns with it cracking pavement or, or damaging anything like that on Pearland Parkway itself. The length of the vehicles, again, will definitely fit within a standard parking space when backed in, and to address your specific question, yes, we can certainly set lot limitations as far as what type and size of equipment can be received at this location. So for example, if somebody rents a 20 or a 26-foot truck coming from out of city or out of state, and they're coming to Pearland, we give them a list of locations where they can choose to drop off at, and in this case, we would simply turn off Bismarck as an option. That way, they That way they cannot and are not allowed to drop at that location.
Okay. I appreciate that. Well, I, I think, especially going after Councilmember Moore's comments and having to agree with Commissioner Fuertes as well, I do think that ideally, if this were in a different location, I, I would be for it for sure. But I, I think that the location where it is now, I, I think that the temptation's there to Councilmember Owen's point, saying, and I don't know specifically, you know, that Lowe's is getting away with this or that, you know, but I do know that there are things out there and whatever their stipulations were. I know that the temptation is probably going to be pretty, pretty high to take on additional. And I'll go back and echo the applicant's rep comments as well, saying that they're trying to keep up with current demand. And I guess the demand is very high right now. And so seeing the very limited space available to actually hold these trucks, I, I just think that it seems very restrictive and the temptation to continue to increase your inventory and meet that demand is going to be a very, very difficult to overcome. So I'm not, I'm not at this point in favor of moving forward with the CUP for this use. And I understand that you were kind of already renting the trucks prior to knowing that this was a requirement. Can, can you speak to maybe, this will be my final question, can you speak to maybe what your business was like prior to being notified that you were not in compliance?
As far as the demand at this location?
Yes.
Well, it was, it was a brand-new business to begin with, so there wasn't too much awareness in the community. They offer postal services, P O boxes, printing, several things, but they just weren't noticed in the community so much. And initially, we did have a truck parked in the front area. So that itself was kind of like a billboard, but that, I, I'm guessing that's what caught the attention of the, the planning commission. And so they brought that to our attention and we immediately removed all the equipment from the property until we find out, or we found out what measures we needed to take to, to get this going.
Okay. Yeah, I just got to go back. I mean, I wasn't on council at the time whenever some of these were put in. So I have to rely upon Councilmember Moore's comments that, you know, part of the original reason for having this be a requirement for these types of businesses on Pearland Parkway was to preserve a certain look and feel. And I definitely don't want to kind of spit in the face of that original intent and try to honor that. I know that Pearland Parkway, now that I'm living off Pearland Parkway, really is a, you know, a, a beautiful entrance to the city. It's a beautiful corridor. I enjoy driving on it. So I wouldn't want to necessarily, you know, tarnish that, that gateway to the city, as I believe Commissioner Fuertes brought up. So at this point, I'm, I'm not in favor of it unless you bring up some really moving point as to, you know, maybe why you can't find another location where you can try to meet your demand, at least from the U-Haul side of things. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Moving to.
Just a couple of questions. And this is to the applicant. Are you currently under a lease obligation at this trip center? Hello?
I'm, I'm not the owner of the business. I cannot speak on any, any terms of the lease.
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we're under a lease obligation. We will not, our lease, we, they agreed that we can have no more than four on the property. So even if we wanted to have a growth in terms of our, in terms of like the number of trucks, we can't because our, the landlord will not allow it.
Okay, so the landlord's lease limits you to four trucks?
Yes, yes.
Okay, are they, are they giving you designated four spaces?
Yes.
Be only for your business?
Yes.
So those spots would be reserved, no one else could use those?
Correct.
And four trucks, like you said, would be the limit to what you have? And all times would be parked behind the strip center?
Yes, behind the strip center, out, out of sight from Pearland Parkway.
Okay. So the only time the trucks would be seen is when they're coming and leaving your, your, they're, they're designated parking places in the rear of the building?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I, I don't have a problem with it then. I think the, it's not going to hurt the aesthetics of Pearland Parkway. You can't see the trucks. So, you know, I, I just don't buy into that argument, but that's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Olondo.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of questions. I guess first, Mr. Obi, if you could speak to when the, what, what is the lease, the remainder on, on this lease term? Do we still have anyone?
Sorry, I was muted. Yeah, so we signed the lease last year, it was a five-year lease, so 2024?
Yeah, I hesitate to, to want to disrupt, disrupt that. At the same time, I mean, we have a, our, our, you know, Pearland Prosperity Plan, which is an continuation of our Pearland 2020 Plan, which one of the key focus areas that we've, you know, been staying since 2012 through now and for the next five years. Further, it's developing these key corridors that are entrances to the city and for with this fact, recommendation, and the staff concerns about the, the impact, the other businesses. I, I just don't think I can, I get there in terms of authorizing this, this conditional use. I, I think, I think that's all I have, Mayor.
That wraps up our city council comments. So the staff do a, up to and to for a wrap-up comment from your position.
Florence, do you have any additional comments?
I don't have any additional comments. Thank you, Mayor.
And to wrap up on my side, Mayor, I think we've heard, regardless of how the vote goes, we'll work with the applicant and the business owner in either selecting new location or helping to ensure that the, the recommendations for the restrictions on the site are enforced. So we look forward to seeing how the vote turns out. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. That information and the record here, let's move to item number C. And at this point, we had a great fine discussion of the issue. And as we go through the process of developing our positions, this particular discussion morphed into a city council new business item, which is, which is standard for joint special meetings. And a joint special meeting requires that you go through a discussion and then go into a council new business item to make a final decision. It's where we are. So with that information in the record, I'm going to ask Councilmember Olondo if he would present this council new business item for our consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me pull that up here. I have a conditional use permit application, CUP 20-00014, so move.
Second, this more.
Motion in a second. We're, we're in discussion, Madam Secretary.
Member Orlando?
No.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Moore?
No.
Member Owens?
No.
The motion fails four to one.
Information, and that completes this particular joint special meeting number one. And we did that exactly eight o'clock. Moving to a new business item, special joint meeting number two. I'll ask the chairman of the planning commission if she would read into record the joint special meeting for number two.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request by Martin Delaney, applicant on behalf of HCA Houston Healthcare Owner for approval of a conditional use permit, CUP, for a helipad within the Shadow Creek Plan Development PD District to accommodate an air medical helicopter on an existing medical facility on approximately 9.88 acres of land. The general location is 11, 11,100 Shadow Creek Parkway. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. With that information in the record, application information case summary is item A, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the commission and city council. This is a request for approval of a conditional use permit for a helipad within the Shadow Creek Plan Development District. And it's to accommodate an air medical helicopter on an existing medical facility. And it's approximately 9.8 acres of land and it's located at the northwest corner of Medical Center Drive and the southbound Frontage Road of State Highway 288. The applicant proposes to install a helipad, so a helipad on approximately 24,000 square foot, feet of the existing parking lot. And that's the base and an air medical helicopter. And it will be located on the south side of the existing building on the property. It also includes a four-foot high fence for aircraft security, perimeter lighting, water and electric access to the helipad and lighted windsock, and an additional storage and maintenance facility for the helicopter. Approval of a conditional use permit for a helipad is required within the Shadow Creek by code. The applicant is requesting this to be able to move forward. This, the next slide, Martin. So this is a aerial and zoning map, which is the property zone as plan development as part of the Shadow Creek. And it also shows the location at the northwest corner of Business, you know, Medical Center Drive and the Frontage Road. Next slide. This is the future land use map and it shows the property to be designated for 288 gateway. And next slide, this is an aerial map and it shows the location of the helipad, which kind of designated here by the white cross there within the parking lot, as well as the maintenance building with the green rectangular shape there. So again, this is on the south side of this office building, approximately 80, 83,000 square foot, multi-story building, office building, medical office building. Next slide, please. And this is a view of that medical office building and obviously the parking lot in the front of that building. So it's just behind this landscape buffer. Next slide. Yeah, this is a view of the parking lot where the helicopter pad or the helipad should be located in front of that building. As I mentioned, it will be secured by a fence as proposed by the applicant. This is the conformity, conformity metrics. And again, the proposed use is consistent with the future land use plan for this type of medical facility. It's also consistent with the thoroughfare plan. These are all designated as major thoroughfares. I should say Medical Center and Business Center Drive, those are secondary thoroughfares. The highway, obviously, is a major thoroughfare. Property is planted and it has access to utilities. Staff, this is the approval criteria and obviously generally meet all the criteria, as you can see in this slide here. Staff has not received any public comments on this request. And based on that, staff recommends approval with one condition, and it's that to make sure that the helipad is secure by wrought iron security fence and it will be around the perimeter of the, of the helipad. And that's, that's the staff report, Mayor. That concludes staff report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Moving to item two, which is applicant presentation. I'll ask the mayor pro temp to present the applicant to make his presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two individuals signed up to speak on this. I, I assume they're both part of the application, Martin Delaney and David Wagner. Am I correct?
That is correct, Mayor Pro Temp.
Yes, we're on the line.
Okay, are you here just to answer questions or we'd like to do a presentation?
Martin would like to make a few comments just to put this into perspective. And I certainly am happy to add on and answer questions as necessary.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Martin.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and council. Appreciating, appreciate you letting us present. The intent of this project from the get-go, just to give you a little overview, was we want to bring a medical helicopter, we have one based downtown right now, to the community where we're, where we're picking up patients and to bring that asset closer to the, the ultimate end user of the service. So this project is a, is a temporizing measure, meaning the next two to three years, eventually we want to move the helicopter to the primary helipad at the hospital there and have space over there. But until we can create the space and, and develop that, the plan is to locate in this parking lot, as Mohammed said, you know, security fencing, everything would, would be in place prior and trying to do this to make it most aesthetically pleasing and, and still maintain functionality. And I can answer any questions that, that you have from a technical or project scope standpoint.
Okay, Mayor, that completes the applicant's presentation.
Moving to item number three, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request, all this pro temp to.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think we have anyone signed up, but is there anyone on the line that wishes to speak for or against this agenda item? No one, Mayor.
Okay. Moving to item number B on our agenda page, planning and zoning commission, city council and staff discussion, in which we will further discuss the items that we have had so far in this particular hearing. And starting off with the planning and zoning commission, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Fuertes, do you have any questions or comments?
No, ma'am. Except I just wanted to make sure that I understood correctly. This, this helipad would be used for patients, emergencies, that situation, not, not for corporate folks wanting to come in? Is that correct?
Is the applicant muted? Is there, I believe Commissioner Fuertes is asking him.
Yeah, there you go. So, correct. The, the primary, the primary mission of this will be for helicopter parking for the medical helicopter. That's it. The intent's not to pick up patients here, but if they were to originate over at the hospital, we would lift up, go over, pick up a patient or respond directly to a scene flight from this location. But no, no corporate activity at all.
Fantastic. The, the other thing I just wanted to note, I'm familiar with a property driven by it like everyone else many times. I don't believe I've ever seen that parking lot full or even half-full. And what we see from the aerial photo is very typical. So I have zero issues with this. I just prefer the people that are, that are on the heli, helicopter. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boswell?
Thank you. Commissioner Boswell?
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Earls?
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dansby?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I just wanted to say I appreciate the, uh, HCA's commitment to the community and, and, uh, continue to assist, uh, their, their future clients in need of a service and providing, uh, uh, a necessary opportunity for them to, to be in a better position than they were when they left, I hope. And, uh, appreciate Mr. Wire just continued, uh, work with the city and committees format and any other, uh, opportunities we need from him. And appreciate again, HCA's commitment to Pearland.
Thank you. Commissioner Henricks?
Yes, I just want to say that I'm definitely for the idea. I think it improves sa- uh, patient safety and health and it's going to be an asset to the community.
Thank you. Mrs. Commissioner Kate, I, I also, um, think it's a great idea. I've been in the hospital recently there just for testing, but it's a beautiful facility and this just, this is just going to make it better. And so I appreciate HCA, um, as Commissioner Dansby said, uh, appreciate the commitment that they have, that they have for Pearland. So thank y'all. That's all, Mayor.
With item two, which is to the council. And starting with, uh, Councilmember Orlando.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, no, I just wanted to echo some of the, the comments by Commissioner Dansby. Uh, very grateful for HCA for their continued investment in, in many ways, uh, in the city of Pearland and in the people of Pearland. And, uh, think that this is a, a, a great step in that long and, and continuing, uh, partnership. So, uh, thank you and, uh, certainly will be supporting us.
Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I don't really have a problem with this. I think it's a, a, an asset to the city. Uh, just to have one, uh, thing, there's, uh, on the diagram, it says a four-foot high fence and in the presentation language, it says four-foot, but in the impact on existing, existing and future developments has proposed six-foot high fence will provide security to the helipad. Uh, and the existing vegetation around it will provide visual screening and noise abatement. Um, are we going to have a six-foot or a four-foot fence?
Four-foot, yeah, yeah, six, six-foot is too tall from an aviation per, uh, safety stand- standpoint. So four-foot is what, what the standard is on helipads.
Is that, that's the standard?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks, guys. That's it, Mayor.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first I'll just, uh, echo Commissioners Dansby, Kate and, uh, Councilmember Orlando's comments about HCA. Y'all have been a great partner to the city of Pearland and I, I really appreciate. Again, the word commitment is almost not strong enough to describe the, the expansion and, and just, uh, general feeling of, of good, good, strong future partners, uh, longstanding partners with the city. So we appreciate you being here and continuing to increase access to quality healthcare for our residents and, and not just for our residents, but the residents in our, in our region. Um, in addition to that comment, Mayor, the only thing I had was for staff. Do we need to amend whenever we move to the, uh, new business portion of this? The, uh, motion to include the language on the fence, since there seems to maybe be some discrepancy on the height. Is that something that we need to do when we make the motion?
Member Hernandez, the, uh, resolution as it's drafted, has it, uh, listed? Oh, I thought I saw it in there earlier. It does not give, the condition does not give a height. So, uh, to be sure you get the heights you want, I would recommend a motion to amend or include it whenever somebody moves for this to be considered.
Okay, that's all I have. Um, appreciate you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. No, uh, I, I have no issue with this and thanks for HCA being, uh, you know, such a great partner to the community and, uh, no issue with the helipad. It'll serve the city well and the residents well.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes, sir. I really don't have a problem with this. Uh, when HCA got ready to come down here, I got a car from, uh, a call from an ex-mayor in Fort Worth, Kenneth Barr. And, uh, Kenneth Barr worked for me with another company, uh, together, but he was on the board for HCA. But, uh, I'm glad to see it, um, adding another helicopter here, I guess, you know, with, uh, Memorial Hermann having one. I want to make sure that one's not busy if they have to come pick me up. So, so I'm glad to see two of them coming in, but yeah, that, that, uh, I, I'm glad to see that adjustment on that. So I have no issues with it at all.
That completes your comments?
Yes, sir. That's all I got to say.
Okay. As this is a joint special meeting, um, and, uh, as we go through the process, you know, the, when we do our, uh, a final discussion, it does morph into a city council new business item, which I shall ask Councilmember Little to present for our consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty twenty dash CUP twenty dash zero 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 one five salute.
Second, more.
I think at this point, Mayor, if, uh, Councilmember Hernandez wants to make an amendment to it, now would be the time.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, yes, I would like to, uh, make a motion to amend the original motion to include language specifying the height of the perimeter fence to be four feet.
I believe we have motion second on that, Madam Secretary.
Okay, so this, uh, motion is for the amended, um, motion to include, uh, language regarding the fence height to be, uh, four feet tall.
Not, not amended motion, but the amendment to the motion, correct?
Amendment to the motion, yes, that's correct.
Voting on the amendment?
Yes. Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries, uh, five to zero.
We have an amended motion. As the council, I don't have further comment or question.
No, Mayor.
I only wanted to say if, if it was possible for me to vote, hell yeah. Okay, I'm just kidding.
You've already done it for us.
You stayed too long in Mexico.
I believe we have a, uh, everybody agrees we have a motion second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
This motion is to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty dash CUP twenty dash zero 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 one five. Um, as amended to include the height of the fence at four feet. Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay, we have completed this section of the adjournment at eight fifteen, eight, eighteen. Moving to.
Mayor, before we call that, I want to ask either Lawrence or, or Darren a question. We have a person signed up to speak tonight, but it's not on any, any specific, uh, agenda item. It's on a noise reduction wall on Makawa, which I don't think is anything we're discussing tonight. Do we call that person to speak?
No, sir. That person's going to have to speak, uh, uh, next Monday. They have to sign up for a specific agenda item or they have to speak to city council at the, uh, public comment section for your regular meeting.
Okay, uh, if Walter Simmons is online, um, Mr. Simmons, you'll have to sign up to speak at our next scheduled council meeting, regular council meeting. Okay, Mayor, you can go ahead.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to joint special meeting number three. I'll ask the, uh, Chair, planning commission to read into the record the joint special meeting number three.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, joint special meeting number three is a request by Bruce V. Kirby applicant and owner for approval of a conditional use permit CUP for an accessory dwelling unit within the suburban residential fifteen SR fifteen district on approximately one and a half acres of land. The general location is thirty-six ten Curtis Road. Thank you, Mayor.
You've completed that. Let's move item A on our agenda, which is application information case summary, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Assuming you've muted yourself, I think.
Okay, can hear me not right?
Yes, feel free to go forward.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor. And so the next, um, case is a condition I use permit for an accessory dwelling unit. A single family property which is located in, uh, SR fifteen suburban residential district and one and a half acre lot. Uh, this, uh, accessory structure is, uh, going to be designed for a family member with disability and a possible caregiver for this, um, family member. Uh, the picture shows, uh, the location of the property, which is in old residential, uh, low density residential and all the neighbors are, uh, residential single family home. And the next is like, uh, so the future land use map, um, uh, this area that shows the property will be in low density residential future land use. This is the floor plan of the accessory dwelling unit that shows that it's, uh, uh, living area, kitchen and, uh, the next block. Uh, it shows this is the com- uh, comforting table. So the proposed, uh, CUP will be consistent with comprehensive plan and future land use plan. And this accessory structure, um, will be in a property that is not platted, will be platted and has no access to water and sewer system of the city, but they have their own septic and water system. The road, Curtis Road, has sufficient, sorry. So the next slide shows approval criteria and as you can see, the proposed CUP, uh, meets all the criteria. And, uh, based on the criteria and the staff research, uh, we recommend approval of the request, that's the U P. And that completes the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to item number two, applicant presentation, Councilmember Little, pro tem.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one person signed up to speak on this, uh, Mr. Bruce Kirby. Are you speaking on behalf of the application?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead with the presentation.
I'm sorry, I don't really have a presentation. I just, uh, uh, I'm the owner of the, the property.
Okay, so you're to answer questions of council and planning?
Correct.
Okay, uh, Mayor, ready to move?
That takes care of all of our applicant presentations?
Yes, Mayor.
Moving to item three, persons wish to speak for or against this proposed request?
Is there anyone online that wishes to speak for or against this agenda item? No one, Mayor?
Okay. That's information completed. Let's move to item B on our agenda. Which is the planning commission, the city council and the staff. Uh, bringing together the discussion and the comments that we've made to date. For final comments, moving, starting with the planning and zoning commission, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Commissioner Earls, do you have any questions or comments?
No ques- no questions or comments, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boswell?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Henricks?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Fortes?
Unbelievably, no, no questions or comments.
Commissioner Dansby?
Just real quick, can we go back to the slide with the area real, real fast? Yes, that's it. So it's, it's low, this is low density, is that correct? Yes, okay. Uh, no, I'm, I'm fine. There's no one spoke against it. Uh, in the community and the neighborhood, I don't see any issue with it ourselves, myself, so I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I don't have any comments either. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, moving item two, city council comments, Commissioner, starting with, uh, Councilmember Owens.
Uh, Mayor, I have no comments on it. I think it's a good deal to go ahead and move forward with it.
Councilmember Moore?
No comments, Mayor.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Same with me, Mayor, no comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Little?
Uh, no comment, Mayor.
And Councilmember Orlando?
Quick one for me. I, I liked to see this a, a lot today. You know, this is something that, um, we've talked about in terms of our housing stock and people's families evolve and our, our city evolves and we have to be able to adapt to that and be that dynamic with uh, exactly this kind of thing. So I'm, uh, glad it seems that, that there are no issues with it and, uh, you know, hope that this can be kind of an example of us continuing to, uh, adapt and, and grow and, and change our housing stock as people's needs require. So, no, nothing further from me, Mayor.
Okay. Moving in our agenda and obviously, uh, staff wrap-up comments at this point.
Uh, staff does not have any additional comments at this time.
No additional comments, okay. Obviously, we are in a joint special meeting as, uh, two items, which means.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes?
Mayor, uh, it's Lawrence over in the legal department. Uh, I, I just wanted to follow up because sometimes the legal department gets this question. Uh, it, it's not in regards to Mr. Kirby or to the family member who lives there. It's in the event that the family member moves out and Mr. Kirby then wants to rent the property. Um, uh, he currently owns thirty-six ten and thirty-six fourteen, both of those homes. That one parcel has both homes on it. Um, this could potentially have a third accessory or a third dwelling located on that property. Uh, I didn't hear a condition to limit the rental of this in the future. I don't know if that's something that council wanted to consider or put on, but as the legal department is often asked then and after something happens, the, the family member moves out and, uh, another family moves in and it becomes parental property and then it's no longer a single-family dwelling. I wanted to present the issue and make sure that if you move forward, you do so eyes wide open and you're okay with that. Or if you wanted to attach a condition that the property can't be rented, uh, you at least have the ability to discuss that at this stage before you, you carry on with the process.
Okay, there's the planning commission. Before we move forward, have any further comment on item, Madam Chair?
No, sir, Mayor.
Okay. Moving item number two is the city council and starting with Councilmember Owens.
Mayor, we've already moved forward as it is.
Move through that. And we have finished that. We're now.
Yeah.
Uh, we could, uh, complete this and, uh, we have a motion and a second on the floor, Madam Chair.
Mayor, we need to, uh, introduce the, um, the new resolution before we vote on it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, Hernandez, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, what you guys are talking about, I didn't look at my agenda too well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you present item number, City Council, your best item?
Yes, sir. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R-two-zero-two-zero dash CUP-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-one-eight, so moved.
Second, more. Second, okay, but more, have a motion second on the form, Madam Secretary.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero to adopt Resolution Number R-two-zero-two-zero dash CUP-twenty dash zero-zero-zero-one-eight.
Good. That information in the record, we are adjourning at eight-thirty-one. And I was following that with such interest that I didn't realize that there were some items I needed discussion. Moving in our agenda to item number four, joint special meeting number four, which I'll ask the Chairman of the Planning Commission to read into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Joint Special Meeting Number Four is a request by Sally Shishani, Heights Engineering LLC applicant on behalf of John Edgar Properties LLC owner for approval of a conditional use permit, CUP, for gasoline station within the general commercial GC district to accommodate a gas station and a convenience store on approximately two and a half acres of land. The general location is fifteen-fifty-six Macawa Road. Back to you, Mayor.
All right. Moving in our agenda, item number A, application information and case summary. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is Florence Buaku with the Community Development Department. This request is for a conditional use permit for a gas station within the general commercial district. The specific location is fifteen-fifty-six Macawa Road. And so far, we've received one written comment against this request. So the subject property has an underlying future land use of industrial. It is located approximately on the corner of Macawa and the future Macard Road extension, and so it would be located right at that intersection. And it's zoned for general commercial, which supports the proposed use. So the first image is a view of the existing site, and so the proposed Macawa, the proposed Macard Road is yet to be constructed, but the property is the vacant property shown on the first image. And then the second one shows the existing Macard Road right at that intersection between Macad and Macawa. And then the third image is where the proposed road extension is going to be. So this is a view of the proposed site plan for the location. Again, the proposed gas station, which is going to have a five thousand square foot convenience store and a twenty-two hundred square foot usable commercial space. It's located right on the corner. It occupies a portion of the larger lot. And it, Macard Road is in the corridor overlay district, so the applicant is proposing landscaping, a thirty-foot landscape buffer along Macawa Road and Macard Road, and a detention point on a portion of the site. So there will still be a significant portion of the larger site left for future development. And so staff has evaluated the proposal based on the criteria outlined in the Unified Development Code, and we found that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan. It is also consistent with the thoroughfare plan. The city has already acquired the corridor for the future Macard Road extension, and so this proposal is not going to have an impact on that. And then when the property is plotted, a portion of the property will be dedicated for the expansion or widening of Macawa Road. And the property has existing utility, city utilities. Again, the request has been evaluated based on the UDC criteria for approving conditional use permit. And so far, as you can see, it is consistent with various requirements or the criteria for approval of conditional use permits. And so based on that, staff recommends approval of the requested conditional use permit with one condition, and that's because the property is located along the corridor overlay district. And since the city does not have the ability to regulate materials, we would like this condition to be included in the development of the site. And that is that the facade shall be developed in substantial conformant with the materials depicted in the facade rendering. Thank you, and that concludes staff reports.
Okay. Moving to item number two, under application information case summary. The applicant is ready to make a presentation, and I'll ask Mayor Portim to introduce him.
Mayor, we have two individuals sign up to speak on this item. Riaz Magnosia and Rana Mahmood.
Yes. Yeah, this is, yeah, this is Riaz Magnosia. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman, for allowing us this opportunity. And I would like to introduce myself. I'm currently in the contract to buy this tract, and we are proposing a state-of-the-art gas station with C-store. And knowing the area, knowing the demand, there's a strong need of a good, visible, beautiful gas station. And knowing the need of the area, we're proposing a fast food also that will go adjacent to the convenience store. On the future Macard Road, there is no gas station going two mile, three mile north or south. On the Macawa, there are a couple of convenience stores, which I believe will be impacted from the future construction, and there will be no gas station in Macawa. So I strongly suggest and recommend for us to have approval. And for other technicality on the site plan, I will suggest my engineer to go and present himself.
Mayor, that completes the applicant's presentation.
This is. This is Rana. He was the second applicant, I mean, the engineer for the applicant to speak few words about the project. Do I have the turn?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Is, we are proposing a gas station on two-point-five acres. The total site is about thirteen acres. So we have plenty of land available to provide all requirements from the staff and public works and everyone. We have worked with the staff to improve our site plan to provide pretty generous landscape buffers in the front. Our client in the, in the, in the past few years have dedicated about three acres of land. The land was originally fifteen acres, gone down to twelve-something acres. Two-plus acres was given to the public for widening of Macard and Macawa. And as the staff members said, that during planting, there will be more land dedicated to public to extend Macard from Macawa to Cullen Boulevard. So this gas station will be a major brand Chevron or Exxon gas station with a, maybe a Jack-in-the-Box or Sonic. We have provided plenty of drive-through stacking space, so we don't impact the roadways. And we have provided driveways as per staff recommendations. So we are hoping that council and staff will consider our application. If there are any questions, we are here to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. We're ready to proceed.
Okay, moving to item three, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request that I heard several in the other bike resolve this. Councilmember Little?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone online that wishes to speak for or against this item? That's it, Mayor. No one signed up?
Member Little, I believe Walter Simmons signed up to actually speak on this item.
Okay, he had on his application. Sure what that was about. Mr. Simmons, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Take your name and address and go ahead and speak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and the only thing approved with the conditions over here, but the only thing that I would request would be a sound reduction wall, because I do live right next door to it. And that's just about all I can say.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mayor?
Opportunity for the Planning Commission, Council, and Staff's discussion. Starting with the Planning Commission. This is the Chair.
Could we get a sound reduction wall on that mic, please?
Mr. Simmons, could you turn off your mic, please?
Mr. Simmons' mic is already off.
Where's the sound coming from?
Somebody's mic is.
Thank you.
Sounds like it stopped.
All right.
Madam Chairman?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Dansby? Questions or comments?
No, I have no comments.
Commissioner Hendrix?
Yes, can we go back to the site plan? I mean, the gentleman said he lives right next door. I was just trying to get an idea perhaps where he lives.
He lives on the property. Yeah, he lives on the property that is zoned GC right on, yes, correct, on the north side.
So what, what would he be recommending that? A kind of, it kind of cut in and out some type of noise reduction?
Commissioner Hendrix, I believe what Mr. Simmons was requesting was a sound reduction wall, and that would be a type of wall utilized to reduce offending noise from commercial, from non-residential developments.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, I think that would be something ideal for this particular situation. I don't know how I feel if a gas station moved the next door, but I do understand that this is going to be turning into a major thoroughfare, and they are going to be giving up land, and I do like the idea of a gas station on Macawa. I would just like to make, you know, the annoying feature to the neighboring properties. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cortez?
Thank you. It's a question for, probably for Martin. Is there a retail node on this intersection, the future intersection of Macard and Macawa? I tried to look up the zoning while we were listening. I didn't find any nodes, though I do see the current zoning.
Commissioner Cortez, the nearest node is much further along Macard at the intersection of O'Day and Macard. So it goes O'Day, Hatfield, Woody, and then Macawa before you would reach back to this intersection.
I guess I'm, I'm wondering years ago why we didn't make this a retail node, and I, I think some of the reasons is because we felt it was quite a bit industrial in the area. Just, just an observation. It definitely, I'm not insinuating that the commercial couldn't go there because it's got to start somewhere, and that the road may be the natural location for that. I guess I have another, just an observation. This is a two-and-a-half acre site. Most C-stores slash gas stations slash, even if they have fast food or QSR, they're not that large, and I believe that I heard two thousand square foot for the C-store. I'm just wondering why, why the property needs to be two-and-a-half acres, unless they're handling the detention for the entire twelve acres. And the second point or question I would have is if they're showing a twelve-acre site that used to be fifteen, and I'm using round numbers, what is planned for the rest of that site? I don't know that, you know, the city and the, or the government, everybody spent the millions and millions of dollars is going to be spent on a hard road. You know, to have something less than fine quality on the corners. And we've already, that was a few meetings ago, we passed something on the, I believe it's Max Road and future Macard. There's already going to be quite a bit of retail there, but I don't believe we passed a C-store or gas station on that one. Those were my comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cortez. Commissioner Boswell?
I had a question regarding for that area, and this is more so for the staff. Did we do research concerning if at all there are any convenient stores within mile, two-mile radius? I know he mentioned north to south, but I wasn't sure if research had been done concerning if there were any convenient gas station stores already in the area.
Commissioner Boswell, to answer your question, there is one that is immediately north along Macawa, within Brookside Village. The nearest one within the city of Pearland is at Macawa and Orange. After that, you get into more of the offshoot roads. So there is one, one gas station located at the split between Broadway and Walnut, and then there is one located along Highway thirty-five closer to Beltway Eight. So we're looking at about four, four to five that are in the general vicinity.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Earls?
No, Mr. Boswell stole my question, so I'm fine, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to know. Yeah, I wanted to know the same thing. I have a, I had something up and counting, and I do count several gas stations within a ten-mile radius, probably seven at least, but I couldn't figure out convenience stores. You know, staff, staff had a map for us last time we had gas stations as a CUP, showing how many were close by. Is there something like that? That we can see, or is?
We don't have a map this time.
Okay, all right, Florence, thank you. That was my only comment is, this area, I know the one gas station that's close by is not an Exxon or a Chevron or anything like that. An Exxon or a Chevron or anything like that. But there are other gas stations fairly close. I I I'm torn on this one. Traffic down that street is terrible and certain times of the day. And I I don't know, I'm torn on this one. I I really don't have any other comment.
Please, planning commission comments. Okay, moving to City Council. Let's start with Councilmember Orlando.
Mayor, I'm trying to fix my charger. If you could just circle back to me, please.
Mayor, we'd like you to come back to him.
Mayor. Okay, come up a little.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I don't have a problem with this. I know there's one across the street, but it's an old one. It's kind of outdated. There's another one at the corner of 35 and Orange. It's a Valero. It's it's also kind of small, and it's not a convenience store. It's just a gas station. Very small inside area. So I think this is probably a good location for it. I think it's an up and coming area. I I would like some type of town for adjacent to the property that Mr. Simmons owned. If if we could work that into the into the CUP. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Remember Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so to I believe it was Commissioner Fuentes pointed out that we not too long ago approved a gas station on the future McCord. And I I just don't want to see McCord get overtaken with gas stations. I think Magnolia being an alternative to 518 right now, East and West is a beautiful drive. It's kind of serene. McCord has, I think, potential to be a really nice corridor in our city as well. I just don't want there to start being gas gas stations stacking up on the street. And as I've been on record saying many, many, many times in the past, once there are gas stations, it's very difficult to have it be anything else. And I think this is a very large tract as well. I think that was another point brought up. One other thing that I'll put in for staff, if you could, and I know that I won't name names. And one of our commissioners accused another one of our commissioners of stealing comments, but I won't accuse anybody of stealing tonight. But I will say that Commissioner Cade also mentioned something that I would like to see, at least in the the future package that we have come before us on these on gas stations in particular, if we could get a map in all of the future package for gas stations, CUPs that do show the other gas stations in the in the general area and kind of in relation to one another, that would be very helpful. But particularly with McCord, Mayor, I'm just my my carve out is really strong for gas stations being, like I said, just one of those things where, you know, love the free market in many respects, but you know, I love the the beauty of our city and our city's environment as well. So I'm probably not a go on this one. Thank you.
Congress member Moore.
I'm sorry. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I do not see an issue with the gas station going in at this location. This is going to be a major roadway, and there's not a gas station in proximity proximity to this on this roadway. If you go a little further north, there's one on Macawa. If you go a little further south, there's one on Macawa. But if I'm traveling on McCord, I'm not going to exit off of McCord and go down Macawa to go to a gas station there. I'm going to want to go to a gas station that's on McCord. This looks like it's going to be a nice facility. I think it's going to add to this this intersection here on McCord, which will be a major roadway through the the city. And honestly, you know, we wouldn't be talking about a CUP for this gas station if it was not. If I can take everybody back again to 2016. When we were trying to preserve Pearland Parkway, we were not allowed to do just Pearland Parkway on conditional use permits for gas stations and and certain things that came up because it would have been spot zoning. So if we weren't, if we weren't trying to preserve Pearland Parkway back in 2016, we wouldn't be here talking about a conditional use permit for this gas station. The property owners would just go ahead and would have built it, and they wouldn't have need our approval. So I I don't have an issue with this being a, you know, a a major, you know, roadway coming through, a major intersection. I think I think the gas station there is going to be fine. So I have no issue with this.
Okay. Congress member Owens?
Yes, sir. Yeah, there's already one little gas station up there at Orange Street in Macawa, and then one on down Macawa. And then you got to Valero there on 35 and Orange Street. And if I'm not mistaken, we have talked about another gas station. I don't know if it's Woody Road and 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 McCord or one road further down to do that. But I've got concerns of having this at this location because, you know, you're coming across McCord there at Macawa. And so there'll be a signal there, I'm sure, at that point in time. And so then you're going to have to take a right into this area here. Either that, and I don't think, you know, one of the things that we talked about previously is come down McCord or Macawa and doing a right end there there before you get to the red light on McCord. So I think, you know, I'd like to see McCord be a better roadway through there. I mean, you know, when we get on Pearland Parkway, you know, you get a shell, and then they use the driveway for Exxon right beside it. And so, you know, I don't know, but I think, you know, there should be a separation through there. And I think as a part of this, I think anytime that county or at planning and zoning brings it to us, I think they need to give us a five mile radius around to look and see what's available at each one of those. You know, Pearland Parkway, you got actually three locations if you count HEB and then the Shell and then 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 the other one with Exxon through there. So and then, you know, if you go up further up, then you've got one at the corner on on 518. So I mean, there's quite a few of them. And and, you know, if you're coming down McCord, you can stop, you know, somewhere wrong through there up on on Shadow Creek Parkway and get gas to two different locations before you run out before you get to Macawa. I guess, but but I think right there on the corner, I think it's a it's going to be a difficult place to put one in there. To be honest with you, trying to come off of Macawa through there to get and that the location prior to getting McCord. And and the other side would be just as soon as you go across McCord there at Macawa, it'd be a right hand turn to get into this property. So I just don't think it's got a, you know, I don't think it's a good location for it. And I think we've got enough gas stations in right now. So that's the way I feel about it right now. Thank you.
If I could, if I could go now, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I I just I want to kind of explain my thinking on this because I think it's important for this item, the next item. But really, a lot of stuff that we discussed, you know, even the the U-Haul thing earlier tonight about how do we make these decisions? And I I think that all of us have this respect, certainly I do, for people's property rights. And we all have a respect for people's individual freedom to, you know, do what they want and and run their business how they want. And so I I think our bias should should typically be, you know, how can we, how can we make this happen? I think when we reject something, it's because we're concerned about the same things. We're concerned about the property rights of the person who wants to open up the gas station, but also the property rights of of the gentleman who just called in who who lives next to the gas station or or the people who live nearby. You know, we we're concerned about the the freedom of the person who wants to run a business, but we're also we're freedom of the person who wants to drink clean water and breathe clean air. And so I I think that we all want the same thing. It's just a matter of how do you balance that on these case by case cases? And that's why, you know, it comes before us. And so when we're talking about gas stations like this, I I understand the thought of there's too many. As I've said before, I I think it's tricky for the government to say, we're going to centrally plan. This is how many of each business there is. I I think there are other really problematic things about a a gas station, though. There's enormous environmental issues, whether it's it's the runoff, whether it's the ground contamination, whether it's the vapor. They're extremely difficult to repurpose. In the last 25 years, 50,000 gas stations have closed across the country. You you see them all the time, just boarded up because they're not very easy to repurpose. So then, of course, it's affecting not just that person. It's a it's affecting everybody. It's affecting everyone's health, the quality of life, the property value. It's affecting everyone. And then lastly, the the community character. And member Moore mentioned 2016, you know, people being up in arms about the number of gas stations and other opportunities on 518. I mean, you go and talk to people, people people in in this city have have very strong feelings about gas stations. And so I I would just close by saying, at the end of the day, I I fully appreciate I have to go get gas. Almost all of us have to go get gas. For many years, we're going to have to continue to do that. But I'm I'm confident, as we've discussed, that there's not going to be anybody's gas tank in Pearland going dry anytime soon. And so with that being said, I I think those other factors, that environmental concerns, the the difficulty to repurpose and the strong community opinions, those those override it for me in this instance. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Okay. That finishes up City Council's staff report. Rupra Plapp?
Mr. Mayor, I have just two responses. And I think there was a comment about the size of the convenience store. It's a 5,000 square foot convenience store with a 2,200 square foot leasable commercial space. And so just to clarify that. And then the other question about the sound wall. When you look at the current site plan presented by the applicant, there's a 145 foot lot, wide lot between the the property to the north and the proposed gas station. So we could include just the location of the proposed gas station as a condition in the CUP if we decided to move forward with it, so that we know that that 145 foot lot or buffer stays in between the residential property and the proposed gas station. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any further comments from staff and other than that, Florence?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only additional comment that I will make is that we hear you loud and clear on the usefulness of the gas station map. And in the future, we will provide a map indicating the near adjacent or the the general vicinity of the area, whether that's a one, two, or five mile map. We'll use our best judgment at that time to provide something that is usable and beneficial for the council's consideration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, appreciate that very much. Our discussion, of course, has taken us to various aspects of this particular development. And and being a joint special meeting, it has morphed into a City Council new business item. And I'll ask Councilmember Moore if he will present this for our consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. What are we on? 17? Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2020CUP20-00017. So moved.
And a second, we're in discussion. Staff report. Madam Secretary?
Member Orlando?
No.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Owens?
No.
Motion fails three to two.
That information, that being the last item on our joint meeting, George Special Meeting Number Four. We are adjourned at 9:05.
Mayor, we have another item.
Turning the page as you speak. You can't see me turn the page, but I am. Special item number five. Senator is on the chair. Would you present the joint special meeting number five?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This joint special meeting number five is a request by Rajah Relangi. I'm sorry if I said that wrong. Applicant on behalf of KNJ Enterprises owner for approval of a conditional use permit CUP for a gasoline station within the general business GB district to accommodate a gas station and a convenience store on approximately 0.86 acres of land. The general location is 4109 Manville Road. Mayor?
That information in the record. Let's move to item A, Application Information Case Summary, Staff Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a request for a conditional use permit for a gas station within the general business district to accommodate, again, a gas station with a convenience store approximately 0.86 acres of land. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing convenience store and gas station. So I want to make this clear. There's an existing gas station with a convenience store on the side as of today. So the applicant intent is to demolish the existing one and to construct a 4,000 square foot convenience store with a gas station and with six fuel pumps. Although this convenience store is a law by right, however, the gas station, the existing gas station is considered legally non-conforming because it's it's grandfathered. And if a non-conforming use is demolished in approval of a conditional and new or a conditional use permit would be required before the use may be reestablished on the site. So with that, the applicant is requesting approval of this conditional use permit to move forward with their construction, a construction plan. If if approved, the CUP would permit them to to construct a new gas station. And and that's why they're requesting this CUP. Staff has received one call from the adjacent property owner on the south side across Bailey Road, and it was informational. So they didn't have any 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 views about the request. If we move to the next slide, Martin, this is the location of the gas station. This is an aerial map and a zoning map as well. Property zone, general business, G also knows GB. And again, the site is located at the northeast corner of Manville Road and Bailey Road. Those were two major thoroughfares in the city. Didn't include a map that shows existing gas stations here on the property. But I I did a survey of all the gas stations within the area, and I included them in the staff report. And there's one across the street, actually at the southwest corner of Manville and Manville Road and Bailey Road. And again, that's 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 in the Manville ATJ, so it's outside the city limits. There's another one. It's the new 7-Eleven gas station that's just about opened. And that's at the corner of Manville Road and Magnolia. And that gas station is about a little bit of about a mile away. And then there's another one on Bailey Road to the east, and that's about a mile and a half away. It's a little small gas station. So those are all the gas stations. Again, this is kind of like towards the southern boundary of the city limits. So there's really not that many gas stations around the area here. Next slide, Martin, this would be a, I'm sorry, I thought it was the the future land use plan. But again, it would have had the property designated as a minor retail node, which would which would provide limited retail and personal service operations for customers within the immediate neighborhood. This slide is the proposed site plan and the proposed elevations, building elevations. It reflects about a 4,000 square foot convenience store with a masonry facade and a gasoline station with six fuel pumps. It will be reoriented towards Bailey Road. Bailey Road is, a portion of that road is in construction right now. Also, the plan would include buffers from the residential. So this property buffers residential zoning from the north and east. And according to this layout, there will be a 25 foot landscape buffer as well as a masonry screening wall to screen this property from these two zoning districts, from the zoning districts, the residential zoning districts to the north and the east. Next mark, next slide. This is a rendering of the proposed gas station that would be built on this site. Again, a masonry facade, a better looking facility as opposed to the existing one. So this is definitely a grade to what we have on the site right now. Next slide. This is a view of the existing gas station looking towards the east across Manville Road. Next slide. And this is, this is the south side and it's looking north across Bailey Road. So what are you seeing here? This is Bailey Road right in front of you. And the next slide, this is conformity metrics. And as I said, the property is designated minor retail node. The use would be consistent with that, consistent with the thoroughfare plan. We have these two major thoroughfares running along Bailey and Manville. And the proposed use will be generally, the layout is consistent with the with the GB zoning as well as the corridor overlay district. Still, smaller details will have to be done at the time of permitting, including landscaping, articulation, and things like that. Property is platted, has been platted recently, and it has access to city utilities. Next slide. This is the approval criteria for conditional use permits. We've gone through these criteria and the proposed use is consistent with the majority of them except, except one of them, which is incorporating roadway adjustment and traffic. And that's related mainly to Manville Road because it's still, it's not a divided thoroughfare. So anticipation in the future, that road we would be, it's a, I believe it's a state highway, state road. And that will be something in the future. Next slide. Staff recommends approval of the CUP. This is an upgrade and with one condition, the approval with one condition and that the development would be, would have to be in substantial conformance to the building elevations and renderings provided by the applicant. That concludes my staff report and I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, moving to item number two. Councilmember Little, applicant presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two people sign up to speak on this. Prasad Maragani and Keshif Kabani. Are you the one to be the applicant or here on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, y'all. Thank you all for giving this opportunity. My name is Prasad Maragani of the Petri Core Group. I'm the applicant along of doing it in behalf of the owner, Keshif Kabani of KNJ Enterprises. I'm also the engineer that has, that we're working on the project. So I will be here to answer any questions and just wanted to say that, as you all have seen the pictures of the existing gas station, this location has been a gas station for the past 40 years, give or take. And whatever, the owner had the option of trying to remodel the existing one, but he believed that it does not really suit the current surroundings and the way the city of Pearland has been developing. So he wanted to make a better gas station and this is our effort to do that. Like as you've seen, Manuel Road is definitely a state right of way. So we'll be working with them to get that driveway done on that side. But the rest of it, as you've seen, is in conformance with the other requirements of City of Pearland's general guidelines. And if there's any additional questions that you all have, we will be glad to answer.
Thank you. Mayor, does that complete your presentation, sir?
Yes, Keshif, do you have anything to talk, the owner? Yes.
Okay, so can you read already, sir? Could you hear me, Prasad?
Yes.
We can hear you, but it's not very clear.
Okay, could you hear me now, sir?
Much better.
Okay, great. So we have this gas station, I want to put in one thing. This gas station has been around for so long and our family for so long. And I've been like, I've been having this gas station since I was 18. I would love to develop a brand new gas station in Pearland, that one especially. It's been, we've been, actually, I did want to, I did not want to remodel, I'm going to do a brand new one because Manuel has grown so much. And hopefully y'all will approve this plan for us.
Okay, does that complete your comments? Okay, Mayor, that completes the presentation.
Okay, moving to item number three on our agenda. Questions wishing to speak for or against the proposed request. Back to the mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone online wishing to speak for or against this application? No one, Mayor.
Okay, moving to item B on our agenda, planning commission, city council and the staff will kind of summarize and to share with each, with us, the discussion that we've had to date. And number one is planning and zoning commission. And I'll ask PC Chair to present this for our consideration.
Mayor, was that for me?
That's for you, PC Chair, yes.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Hendricks, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I just want to say that I live around the corner from this gas station and I would absolutely love to see it remodeled. And it's certainly the gas station, the little gas pumps updated because they are in very old condition. And I think that it would help the look of that, especially as Bailey Road is becoming more popular. It would definitely make that area or that corner look a lot better. And I just wanted to point that out. It definitely would be something that would benefit Pearland. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Dansby?
Yes, just a quick question. I believe the engineers on the line as well, just wanted to verify that you're to update this station. Are you going to be updating the tanks underground as well?
Yes, it would be a complete overhaul, everything would be demolished and you would be putting the new tanks into.
Okay, just my comment would be that, you know, the existing use of this project is a gas station and a derelict gas station, I'll drive by it all the time. And that I would say that if someone's willing to come in and spend the money, refurb it, recondition it and put up something brand new, I'm all for it. But I know we're on the opposite end of the conversation regarding gas stations with council and system responses. But in this particular case, you have a vacant or a derelict piece of property that would be a positive to update with the continued existing use that was acceptable to the community prior to. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Fuentes?
I would echo both Commissioners Dansby and Hendricks. I did want to point out that this property, I believe, is, if I saw it correctly on the slides, 200 by 190 measurements. That's significantly less than an acre. And as you noted, the last, the previous was two and a half acres, which is again, why I asked that question before. Significant size difference for one convenience store was 5,000 square feet and this one's 4,000 square feet. That's not a significant difference. But perhaps there's other differences, but it just, it didn't lead me to believe or have confidence in the previous. So in this one, again, we have a, we have a complete makeover. And I support it for that reason. It's, I don't, I don't consider this a brand new CUP where we're coming in with a brand new station. And I realize the other one, you know, is nonconforming and such. I realize all that, but, but again, the building is there. It is not the prettiest building. It's been there forever. And now it's going to get a complete makeover and I couldn't support that enough. I appreciate the opportunity to make those comments. One last thing, I would consider, though, taking the name Manville off the picture or the facade of that building. It is in Pearland, not Manville, so just noted.
I just wanted to say that was actually because this is a part of Speedy Express Chain and I put that as Manuel because of the street name. So I could recognize the right one to send it over to you. The brand name is going to be Speedy Express, it's a chain, Manuel is not, so thank you.
It was, it was just in comic, I was saying that. I didn't mean for you to have to respond, I understand.
Thank you.
Commissioner Earls?
I think it's a good addition. I know where that corner is and where that story is, has some desperate need of upgrade. And again, if someone's going to spend the money to do so, please do so. And as Councilmember Hernandez said, once a gas station, always a gas station. So that's all, thank you.
Commissioner Boswell?
While I'm normally opposed to gas stations because I just feel that we have enough, I do support this. If there's an existing one and we're going to do an overhaul and improve the conditions, then I'm in support of this for once. Thank you.
And this is Commissioner Kate and I echo Commissioner Boswell exactly. It's hard for me to say yes to gas stations for the same reason, we have enough. But this one is a good idea and I appreciate the fact that they're changing the tanks and really doing a good job to make this a better, a better gas station, since that's what it already is. So thank y'all, that's, I think that's it for the, for planning and zoning. Thank you.
Moving to item number two, which is the city council and starting with Councilmember Owens. Would you still with us? Let me go up to Councilmember Moore, we'll come back to Owens later.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I have no issue with this. I think it's great that they're going to come in and make that look a whole lot better than what it is. But I do want to just point out to everybody else that was, you know, against gas stations and the previous one, there is a gas station directly catty corner across the street from this one. So, I mean, this is your chance to stop this one if you wanted to. This is your opportunity right now because there is one directly across the street from this one. I have no issue with it, I'll be voting yes.
Okay, Councilmember Little?
Yeah, I'm familiar with this location. I drive down Manville Road quite often and it's somewhat of a nice source. I think it's a good idea that it's going to be a complete remodel and modernization of a gas station that's existing. So the concerns about one more gas station, it shouldn't be of a concern. But that's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Hernandez, I almost passed you by.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question either for the applicant or staff. Just in the event of a hypothetical not passing situation, what would happen to the existing structure? Would it just remain as is?
I believe, yes, I mean, the owner would then probably have to think about trying to remodel the existing one and get it back into operation. But again, that's subject to approval from the engine department.
I see, okay, well, I appreciate it. So, I mean, there's already, I think, some existing examples here in town where, and to Commissioner Earls is reference to the point that I bring up a lot, you know, once a gas station, kind of always a gas station. So I think that this is an exception to my carve out that I mentioned. And, you know, I'd rather it be at least a functional business that's generating something for us rather than just an eyesore and potential hazard to our community. So I think for this particular case, I would be in favor of this CUP. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Lombo?
Thanks, Mayor. No, I think this falls in line exactly with what I was talking about earlier. Thousands of gas stations every year get abandoned. For the most part, they, they just sit there and don't look good. So the fact that the longtime owners here are coming in and going to do the reinvestment to, you know, make an existing gas station functional and appealing, I think it's exactly. I think is exactly what we should want to see in this, in this situation. So it doesn't bother me to have two things, but it does bother me to have an empty vacant gas station. So I, this is a good one to support. Okay, if I could just ask one question, though. I'm a little bit curious about the, what seems to be kind of a weird scenario where they, they are unable to, they're, I guess, is the characterization correct? Could we confirm that that characterization is correct? They simply remodel the existing gas station without going through the CUP process? But you're almost penalized for wanting to go the next step because in demolishing it, you then trigger the need for CUP? Is that correct, Martin or anyone?
Councilmember Owens, have you?
Yes, sir. I'm here, I had muted myself. But anyway, yeah, that's 1128 there, it's Farm to Market Road. And I have to get a permit out of the state to come in, do a developments here or on that side. One thing, you know, it is four or five years ago, I guess, and done a lot of improvements in that area. With this gas station, though, there is a Hispanic guy that does repair and shoes. And he does a really, really good job there. And he's been there for years and I, you know, I'd love to see that guy stay there. I've used him a few times myself, but, you know, I can see where, I guess it could be remodeled, rebuilt or something like that on there. But, but again, you know, I think we're getting a lot of gas stations around through there and there are quite a few of them on there. So, you know, I've never seen anybody buy gas there. But I've seen them going in, using the station to buy goods on there, whatever they're going to buy on the inside of it. But, yeah, I hate to see, I don't know if they're going to leave the Hispanic guy there to do shoes or not. But, but I'd like to see that man stay there because he's done a good job. That is the only thing he had done. So that's kind of the way I feel about it right now.
Mayor, did Martin get a chance to respond to Councilman Orlando's question?
Appreciate it. I was going to handle it during the staff wrap up irregardless. But it's all good. So to answer Councilmember Orlando's question, whether you can do interior improvements or if it's being viewed as, you know, a negative to have to come and get the conditional use permit. The Unified Development Code allows for repair and maintenance of buildings. The trigger point would be when they came in to do more than 50% of the appraised value in interior or exterior renovations. in interior or exterior renovations. I, I, I don't have an answer for what that particular value would be with the current condition of the property. But the, that is, I believe the specific question is whether or not there is an ability to continue the use and to continue doing their activity there without coming forward for the conditional use permit. The key is that they have to maintain the use over that time and that if it went to six months for it to be an abandoned use, then they would have to go back through and get the conditional use permit approved anyway. Did that answer your question, Commissioner or Councilmember Orlando?
I think so, yeah. So it, it, it doesn't change my, it, it doesn't change my, I feel about it. But it seems like, yeah, essentially at this point, they probably would have to get a conditional use of it either way.
Excuse me, Mayor Reed, this is Darren and I just wanted to interrupt. I just received a phone call from Councilmember Hernandez letting me know that his internet went out on him. So he's actually out of the meeting for the brief moment. And with that being said, we are technically now without a quorum. He is trying to call in and he asked that if you could just briefly recess until he tries to call in using his phone to get into the meeting so he can continue and the council can ultimately take action.
Chair, we agree with that to make sure we have a quorum. At, we have a recess at 9:31.
And if everybody could just, just stay on, obviously not have any discussions. It's been restored and we can go ahead and proceed.
Okay, we are reconvening our committee at 9:33.
Mayor Reed, do you mind if I finish the staff wrap up?
And I believe, oh.
Mayor, I would appreciate it if Martin had the opportunity to complete that because I did not get an opportunity to hear his answer originally.
I think he, Councilmember Hernandez, so to catch you up, the answer to the interior improvements or rights to repair that's discussed within the Unified Development Code and it essentially comes down to whether or not those improvements would be more than 50%. If they are more than 50%, the conditional use permit would have to be reapproved or approved as this was a, a use that was established prior to the property being annexed into the city. The second point that I wanted to bring up, just as further awareness of how long the applicant and property owner have been working with the staff to get this development here to this day. They originally came in mid-2019 utilizing our pre-development services to discuss the, their proposed development with the, with the staff and the various members of that team. Development Services Division had everyone together and discussed the issues. They redrew their plans, which are what you see here before you tonight. And this is a significant improvement over what was first shown. And I'm, I'm glad that I can be a part of that to bring this forward to you today. And that completes our staff wrap up.
Well, that's also complete your comments, Councilmember. Hernandez?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, good. Any other comments from council?
Mayor, this is one quick question for Martin over there. That place has been there a long, a long time. And those gas tanks that they had underground there are, are not, certainly not binned properly. Is there anything that the city will ask for that to be done? I mean, they're, they're probably going to have to take them out, but on there, but they've been in there for a long time.
Councilmember Owens, according to the Brazoria Appraisal District, the convenience store has been there since about 1984. So I would agree that the, the gas tanks have probably been in there for quite a long time. I do not specifically know what remediation the city will require. Of course, we will adhere to whatever TCEQ or requirement.
This is Adrian. I did, am I correct in thinking that the applicant earlier stated that they were going to change those out already?
He did.
Correct. That, that was stated.
He did, but not only that, but in the late 90s, everybody was required to conform to certain TCEQ standards on underground storage tanks. So regardless of how old that station is, they would have had to upgrade those tanks somewhere in the late 90s. So they, they wouldn't have had a choice. They would have had to shut down.
Good, good. Thank you.
Any comment from the city council at this point? Hearing none, we must move to item three for staff wrap up.
He just completed that, Mayor.
In which I think you did a good job of it because you, you settled for agreeing that that was a good staff wrap up? Or do you want to amend that?
Nothing additional, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, you did it. You, you done good. I'll have to say that. Okay, so we moved out to item number C. Obviously, we are still in a joint special meeting, which means that our discussion morphs into a city council new business item. And to initiate the new business item, I'm going to ask Councilmember Owens if he will present this for our consideration.
Yes, consideration for resolution number R2020CUP2000019. I still move.
Second, more?
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Madam Secretary?
Glad you got it right this time.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Yes.
Member Moore?
Aye.
The motion carries 5 to 0 to adopt resolution number R2020-CUP20-00019.
And I would like to announce that as of 9:39, I will adjourn this series of joint special meetings. And thank you for the good job you've done. I appreciate the work and thank all of you. Just stay safe. We might have to do this again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good night, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.